Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Next up is A.J. Kirkpatrick, who's going to talk to us a little bit about the Bricktown Strategic Plan. Jeanette Smith's here from Bricktown Association, welcome this morning.
Yeah, good morning, members of council. A.J. Kirkpatrick with the Planning Department. As the city manager mentioned, we are joined by Jeanette Smith in the audience, who is the executive director of the Bricktown Association. I'm here today to present a summary of the Bricktown Strategic Plan. This effort was requested following the completion of the 2008 Bricktown Parking Study, with the realization that we were approaching 20 years since the 1992 Bricktown Plan. This was largely informed by an interview process that we did in the fall of last year. We interviewed the nine largest property owners in Bricktown. That interview panel included myself, staff from the Bricktown Urban Design Committee, as well as staff from downtown OKC, Jeanette from the Bricktown Association, and also the Greater OKC Chamber. One other point of business before I move on, I just want to point out that you have 11-by-17 glossy handout with some of the summaries of what we found in the study. We did that so we would be able to address some of these slides faster, so if you want, you can review back to that for more details. Through the process of interviews and research, we aimed at the following vision: we wanted to develop a 24-hour urban neighborhood that complements the rest of downtown, capitalizes on existing and planned public improvements, and offers a mixture of development opportunities to its owners. So I called the document a bit of a hybrid; it's part planning study and part market exploration. I don't use the term "market analysis" because I don't feel that I am a market analyst, but that's one thing that we recommend, is they may want to do some further research on that. In terms of the goals, we wanted to really hear what the property owners had in mind for their property. We wanted to heighten awareness amongst the property owners about some underserved markets that they may be missing. We wanted to communicate the banking community's preferences. We felt like a lot of good advice had been given to Bricktown in the past 20 years, and we wanted to make sure that we had chronicled that in some way, put it into writing. And we realized that Bricktown is not homogeneous. We wanted to get into some of the conversations about how maybe east Bricktown is different than lower Bricktown. Outline implementation objectives and responsible parties, and then finally, provide additional info and existing resources. We have a lot of resources already; there may be some miscommunication or disconnect in terms of how to best use those. So after following up with those interviews, we came up with some opportunities and challenges to help guide our further research. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I will mention the ones that are bold. Clearly, we heard lots of great feedback about how Bricktown is the premier entertainment district in the metro region, and possibly even the multi-state region. To give you an idea, this is a quote that we got from one of the interviews: "We moved to Bricktown from the suburbs because we wanted to be part of something bigger. We wanted to be in the middle of it all, and we have loved it." Second, while we heard some concern that the Quarter Short Plan could possibly sap energy away from the district, we believe that especially with the recent recommendation to move the convention center north of Boulevard, that the area between downtown and the river will largely become residentially dominant in the future, and that those residents should be able to further support Bricktown on non-event nights. Third, stakeholders highlighted the significant transportation investments that have already been made in that area, such as the district's good supply of parking spaces, or the presence of the Santa Fe Station and the Heartland Flyer, as well as future investments being discussed, such as the potential expansion of the Flyer into Kansas City and eventually onto Chicago, the installation of a streetcar line, and the possibility of Santa Fe Station being turned into a multimode transportation hub. Finally, we were pleasantly surprised to hear a few complaints and even some high regard for the city's development review process in the interviews. While the interview panel did hear some concern about the speed of development review, we heard more about the fact that the design review process in particular is important. This is an example of one of the quotes we heard: "Design review has been around long enough now that I think most property owners are comfortable with the process, understand its value." Moving on to the challenges, again, I'm not going to read all of them to you, but highlight the ones that are in bold. First, the interview panel heard a growing concern about the lack of development diversity in the district. It appears that property owners in Bricktown, similar to owners in other entertainment districts in the nation, have realized that bars, and to a lesser extent restaurants, are relatively cheap to build out and are capable of generating a lot of money. And at times, the district has been accused of hitting a rut. Similarly, and more recently, the success of the downtown hotels has generated a great deal of interest in additional hotels, but the future demand is cloudy. Second, compared to other parts of downtown, Bricktown in particular has attracted entrepreneurs that made their money in other professions, and admittedly are learning development as they go. We heard this a lot in interviews. This is particularly troublesome, as many of the properties in Bricktown represent some of the most difficult development hurdles, such as environmental hazards and just the general age of the buildings. Third, the Planning Department feels that more analysis could be done to examine what different user groups want out of Bricktown. This is an example of one of the quotes we heard addressing some of those issues: "I worry about Bricktown; there's no commonality of goals amongst owners right now. It's like ships passing in the night." Another one from one of the local bankers that we interviewed: "Some property owners in Bricktown want $80 per square foot of what is often unfinished space, but we just financed a Bricktown deal that was bought for $25 per square foot, renovated, and then sold for $85 per square foot." And the fact that this was a timely conversation, actually Oklahoma ran an article on September 30th, in which they interviewed some local brokers about what they were seeing in Bricktown. This is one of the quotes I pulled from that article regarding the vacant upper floors: "When you try to sell for $100 per square foot, and it takes another $100 per square foot to finish out, the numbers are all upside down." So in hopes of building on these strengths and addressing these challenges, the Planning Department analyzed the district from a couple of different perspectives. First, based on some research we had seen in pure cities, we wanted to look at what we believe the primary user groups for the district should be. Again, these are outlined in your handout, so I won't go into great detail in this slide. Clearly, in the interviews, conventioneers and tourists, or what I'll call visitors in general, were identified as the primary user group for Bricktown, but we wanted to use the document to try to get the property owners to view some of these other groups that they may be overlooking. So once we identified these four main user groups, we then looked at some national research on spending patterns of each of these groups. And this is an example of what we found. This is the most recent; it's from 2000. I was hoping that we could find something more recent. But the travel industry of America Association did a nationwide survey of visitors and what they spend their money on when they travel. Seventy-seven percent mentioned that they bought clothing or shoes, whether on a trip, either vacation or business-related. Another 49% bought souvenirs, another 42 books or music, specialty foods and beverages, and finally, kids' toys. The key point here being that we need to ask ourselves is, if a visitor that is coming to the convention center, how many of these things can they find in Bricktown currently? So returning to this slide about the other groups. For employees, national data shows that lunch hours have shrunk nationally since the late 1980s. We're actually down to an average lunch hour of 50 minutes. In short, workers need more fast options, but not necessarily more fast food. What we call fast casual, so things like Panera, Cool Greens are examples of something that can be done quick, where you're ordering at the counter, you're not necessarily dealing with a waiter or waitress, and it's easier for you to get in and out for a short lunch hour. With each passing year, more and more new residents are moving within walking distance of Bricktown. While critical mass for grocery store is still low, and we hear that repeatedly, there is potential for additional smaller retail services that could be aimed at the residents. Finally, the UCO Academy for Contemporary Music is in its third year, and attendance has topped 425 students, and is expected to reach 1,200 in a few years. This means that on any given day, there are over 200 students in Bricktown at times during 8:00 to 5:00, when Bricktown used to be a ghost town. But little new activity has sprung up to take advantage of this new and growing market, even in its third year. Examining national trends, it turns out that college students have a surprising amount of disposable income, and in addition to spending on things like movies, concerts, and technology like iPads and iPods, they also spend it on junk food. So this is just a small example from the Harris Interactive College Explorer Study from 2002. In that year, spent over $3 billion on soda, 1.4 billion on bottled juice, and another 1.4 billion on bottled water. So clearly, when we talk about the college students and say that they don't have any money, that is a misnomer. We have national data showing that the college students actually have more disposable income than you would realize. So once we looked at it from that perspective, we also went back and looked at it from mixed uses. This was largely informed by our conversations with bankers. Following that interview of the nine major property owners, they asked us to talk to three bankers locally, to get a better understanding of why they weren't lending in Bricktown. The truth is, they are lending, but there's a little bit of a disconnect that I'll get into later. So I will not go into great depth on this slide, but we'll summarize it by saying there's clearly high interest in entertainment and hotel, but surprisingly little interest in adding new speculative residential and office at this time. Talk of any future retail is stymied by too few housing units at the moment, few opportunities for cheap, short-term parking, and the need to create retail on a much more major scale than past scattered and piecemeal attempts in the district. This is an example of what we heard from the local bankers: "Once the currently proposed hotels are built," that includes the Aloft and the dual concept that's on Sheridan, "we believe the number of hotel rooms in Bricktown will be sufficient for several years." This is important because there has been some conversation about a convention center hotel, and we need to be cognizant of the number of hotel rooms we're bringing into the market if we eventually attempt to pursue one of those. Another quote: "Despite the ongoing glut of office space in the CBD, we see some potential for more low-to-mid-rise office space in Bricktown. Particularly around Main Street, it has great parking resources for office." This is something that became very clear during the Bricktown Parking Study. In the middle of the day, we're using our Bricktown parking supply less than 35%. So we have a great deal of parking that's only being used primarily on Friday and Saturday nights. We need to learn how to diversify the district more and to use more daytime uses that are going to take advantage of the large parking supply it has. This is the final quote I'll share with you from a banker: "If I had to rank my bank's current lending preferences in Bricktown, I'd say, number one, residential; two, office; three, retail hospitality; and four, restaurants. And the reason I put that in there is because I think if you interviewed several of the property owners in Bricktown, their list would be the exact opposite. I think that's a key disconnect that we're seeing between the banking community and some of the property owners in Bricktown." So through all that analysis, we came up with the five implementation objectives. We wanted to diversify district land uses, increase knowledge and understanding of emerging markets and trends, improve the experience for tourists and visitors, promote collaboration and connections between district stakeholders, and five, enhance walkability by encouraging optimal use of land and improving the appearance of the parking lots. We came up with some initiatives here. We tried to split them up over the three partners, first being DOKC and the Bricktown Association, the private sector, and then finally, the city. We believe that the DOKC and the Bricktown Association, the private sector, need to work more on those first six. Then we need to continue to implement the Bricktown Parking Study. Two, create a more public presence for the Bricktown Association. Currently, it's tucked away in a very small office in the Red Hawks Stadium. We'd like to get it out and have it more of a public presence in a street-front building. Three, better understand the market, commission a market study where they can dig into some of these issues greater, and then also conduct some customer focus groups with possibly some downtown residents or downtown employees about what they really want out of Bricktown. They need to expand the attraction options. We heard a lot of conversation, but little cooperation at the moment about doing more family-oriented entertainment options. I think everybody has a different idea of what that could be. It's a matter of harnessing all that energy towards a common goal. And then they need to continue to develop new special events to fill in and to keep some of the older special events feeling new. They should look at how to market collectively to attract tenants. They need to look at improving the canal amenities. The canal is starting to mature into a kind of a second generation of ownership. There's been a lot of issues brought up about how we could improve the canal. One is we need to better define the access and entryways, particularly from Oklahoma. There's concern that it's hard for visitors to find out how to get from the street level down to the canal level, so we think there's some possible signage and some new things that can be done to the stairways. They also would like to improve the canal's electrical and audio capabilities. Right now, it's difficult to host major events down there, or to even do some of the Christmas lights, because the electrical abilities on the canal don't really meet that demand. And then private sector, we asked them to initiate new development, to utilize the vacant upper floors and canal frontages, and also to broaden the dining options to fast casual. This is particularly important for the students that we're going to see more and more of. They are on a somewhat limited budget, and they need places where they can order at the counter and get in and out fairly quickly. And then finally, we'd like them to improve the appearance of the surface parking lots. In turn, the city, the public sector, we're going to continue to implement the Bricktown Parking Study. We're going to evaluate some of the existing codes and guidelines. Some of the issues that came up were dog walking on the canal, permitted uses on the canal, and then also whether or not to allow street vending in Bricktown. We think it might be important to go back and reevaluate whether or not we should do the ABC3 by right in the entire district. It's not a matter of removing it entirely; you could still apply for it, but we wonder if east Bricktown, the area that's largely industrial, if we might want to remove that ABC3 by right, so that you might see some things like hotels and residential that may not want to be that close to a bar, but at least within walking distance. The problem that we've seen in other entertainment districts is if you continue to do bar after bar after bar, you're chasing away other land uses that are more sustainable. You don't want residents above bars. Retailers don't want to be next to a bar, if they're going to have to be cleaning up every morning after the patrons. So we need to be looking at that for the long-term sustainability of the district. Examine capacity for additional limited-service hotels, given the need for the convention center hotel. We promised we would consider plan recommendations and future capital improvement planning. Explore ways to buffer the speculative risk. Right now, there's very little interest in doing anything speculative in Bricktown with a lot of the empty buildings. We need to see if there's some way that the city can help to try to break down some of that risk. And then more parking changes. We would like to consider shorter terms in some of the parking lot leases. We own the parking lot in front of the Coca-Cola Center and leasing that. And then also, the parking lot to the north of the district is one that we own and we're leasing. We're leasing those for 25 years. We're seeing people now come back with development proposals, and it's quite a while to have to wait. Then also, strengthen parking lot design standards. Right now, the standards aren't that great. We'd like to strengthen those. And then we'd like to explore the possibility that we've seen in some other cities, where we require some of the existing lots to, over time, come up to those new standards. And then finally, we would like to look at adding more on-street parking. These are some additional capital improvements I wanted to finish up with. This map came from the Bricktown Parking Study. The green areas on this map are places you can park on the curb. The red areas are places you cannot park on the curb in Bricktown. What we found in that is that less than 40% of the curb space in Bricktown right now is parkable. We think that's not correct for an urban district, a walkable district. In addition to that, you've seen some major retail failures in lower Bricktown and on Reno, and a lot of that has come back to the fact that it's difficult to find short-term convenient parking. This is a quote that Jeff Speck, who did our walkability study a couple of years ago, recently said: "According to the National Trust for Historic Preservation, each on-street space removed costs local businesses $10,000. And using very crude measurements, we think we could add almost 250 spaces on Reno alone. By comparison, if we were to put that in a garage, that's going to cost, on average, $15,000. Spaces that could almost come to about $4 million." We want to look at improving pedestrian connections. This is Joe Carter, Russell, and Perry. We've heard complaints from both Bricktown and Deuce residents that there is not enough connectivity so that residents can walk down to Bricktown. Russell and Perry is lacking sidewalks and lighting, so we'd like to try to address And then also, we are getting ready to embark on design work for the Boulevard, so we need to keep in mind some of the key connections here, that we need to make this as pedestrian-friendly as possible, and that we need to continue to push or as many north-south connections as we can between both the Boulevard and the new alignment. Terms of next steps, we actually are not bringing the final plan to you here. This is just an opportunity to get some feedback from stakeholders and from council members. We will continue to revise the planning document, and we hope to bring it back to council soon to have an official council action on it. With that, I close.
Comments or questions on the Bricktown Strategic Plan?
Just a quick question, Your Honor. On the parking, on the street parking, were you anticipating that it be metered parking or free parking?
Yeah, I think you could probably do metered parking the same as what we have in the rest of the district. And then currently, it goes free at 6:00, and I think that would help address a lot of the concern we're hearing about it being difficult to find curb space. It also takes off pressure from the lower Bricktown parking lot that's currently having to offer free parking.
And then on the comment you made about improving the appearance of surface parking, did you have something in mind specifically?
In the report, we actually have some photos of one lot that doesn't have any fencing or landscaping compared to another lot in the district that does, and it really is a night-and-day difference about how much that improves the look of the district, as well as the pedestrians' experience.
All right. David?
Yes, I just want to express a little bit of concern, I guess. Just reading the newspapers, apparently, some of the things you've talked about as far as what you'd like to see in Bricktown, perhaps more retail, perhaps even more short-term parking to support the retail, especially in the lower Bricktown area, is what one of the new businesses is trying to achieve, but yet it continues to be pushed off as far as the Bricktown Association allowing them to put their new business in place. It's the USA Screen printing business, the big red, or, you know, they sell T-shirts with logos and things. And it's my understanding, just from the newspapers, that the Bricktown Association is preventing that business to finalize its plans. And all I would say is, it gives the impression to the general business community, if nothing else, as to perhaps your area is more difficult to work with than what you may think there is, and I would encourage some type of solution to get agreed to. Russell, can you comment?
Well, I'm not the Bricktown Urban Design Staff, so I'll let Russell address that.
And I'm not meaning any specific issues addressed. I'm just saying, this has gone on for a couple of months now. Russell?
That is the Bricktown Urban Design Committee, as A.J. said. I think the media did a poor job of characterizing the discussion on that. There has been a consultation for a long period of time, trying to work with the proponent of this proposal to recognize what the Bricktown Design District is trying to accomplish, and that does not accommodate surface parking on such a valuable lot in the center of the Bricktown area adjacent to the canal. From a planning perspective, that's a really bad idea, but the owner continues to go forward with that proposal, and the Bricktown Design Committee continued to dislike the idea. So that's what's happening in that particular case.
Well, I don't want to get into a discussion, but it sounds like in this presentation, you're looking for additional parking in the southern part, and that here's the business trying to provide that to support their own business.
I think the point is that Bricktown is an urban district, just as the downtown core is, and that people need to walk, that you cannot have parking immediately adjacent or in front of every, or surface parking adjacent to every business that's going to go into the Bricktown area. Otherwise, you have a suburban development. It's not Bricktown. The Bricktown image begins to dissolve, and that's why the opposition is there.
And if I could follow up on that, I think what I'm saying is, I'm drawing a distinction between off-street and on-street. And I think what we found in earlier conversations in the Bricktown Parking Study is that we have, I understand that there are reasons why we have Reno the way it is, because of the major events and the need to get people in and out quickly after those major events. But as a parker, your first preference is going to be to try to find an on-street space, and by not having enough of those, we are driving people into off-street lots, and we have created a very strong parking market because of that.
I think another point to bring up with the Bricktown Parking Study a couple of years ago is it did demonstrate that there is plenty of parking in Bricktown. We're still wondering the issue of people not being prepared to walk more than 100 meters.
But one of the reasons that you would want to add more spaces, I think, is that if you scatter it on the on-street, that you're actually giving people more options than a single surface lot.
Well, again, final comment. Whether or not it's a fair or unfair presentation that the media is creating in this situation, the fact that the two parties can't reach a conclusion or an agreement, I think, is problematic, and it tends to give the impression that perhaps locating a business in Bricktown perhaps is going to be more difficult than what your organization is trying to demonstrate. And that's all I'm saying, is I just wish the parties could come to an agreement and get it out of the media, and let a new business come into play and start generating income for the business owner, income for the city through sales tax, and let's, you know, find a solution.
Well, and the interviews were done prior to Chris Johnson's proposal to do the parking lot, but I'm afraid that the media has latched on to the negative side of that. In the interviews, we did a lot of discussion about the need for more retail. So the more exciting thing about Chris Johnson's proposal is the House of Bedlam, which is going to provide more opportunity for visitors to get OU and Oklahoma State apparel, which, until the Bricktown Emporium opened, had been somewhat difficult for visitors downtown to find. So that is very exciting, and I do hope that Chris was able to get the project done.
Okay. A lot of focus on parking and automobiles. It seems that the primary goal should be to get people into Bricktown without a car. And I mean, one of our major goals is the streetcar. I haven't heard any discussion about the streetcar. And I'm wondering how that plays into that, what impact you think that'll have on parking requirements, what you think about the streetcar's proposed route?
Right.
What, it seems to me that streetcar route needs to get to as much housing as possible. This, I don't know where this picture is, but it's very disturbing in terms of pedestrian connections from the housing. I mean, that seems critical to have sidewalks and lightings to get people from the housing into Bricktown. That's the whole point of living nearby. So is there money in the, I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but is there money in the 2007 bond? Are we targeting sidewalks for any of these pedestrian, or any of these housing developments?
Well, let me, there are a couple of issues I want to try to address there. First, in the study itself, I didn't highlight it quite so much in the presentation, but we do talk about the need for Bricktown to evolve from more than just an entertainment district into more of a neighborhood. And that's what we've seen in other entertainment districts, is you need to eventually start doing more on the upper floors, putting in office workers and residences that are going to be, you know, closer users of your businesses. In the early days, Bricktown was very reliant on visitors, especially on people driving in from suburban communities on a Friday, Saturday night. And what that has created is a very boom-bust cycle, where, especially prior to the MBA coming to town, they were having to make most of their money on Friday and Saturday night, and then they were very lean throughout the business day and then also the rest of the week. So throughout the document, we really try to get the property owners to start to see the value of getting more users there throughout the week, and diversifying and spreading out some of that business. So clearly, with each new residential unit, those are new users that we're trying to get them to understand that they should be serving. In addition to that, yes, there was a lot of conversation with Bricktown about the value of the streetcar. I think even from the Bricktown Parking Study and then some work we did in DSI, the Downtown Strategic Initiative, there was a strong interest in using Sheridan as a main spine to get people from the central business district over to Bricktown. I think that the current proposed route, in terms of analysis, does a very good job of addressing that. So you're right, there will always be, I think, a lot of conversation about how to get people by car there. But with each new transportation investment we're making as a community, most of those are ending up at the front door of Bricktown. You've got the streetcar running by, you've got a multimodal hub that's going to be right across the railroad track. So that is, we feel like one of the charges of the Planning Department is to continue to push that issue so that we can get some better, higher-density development in Bricktown, and that it doesn't become a sea of surface parking lots.
All right. Skip?
With 90% of the properties in the Bricktown area owned by private investors or the owners of these businesses that are presently there, what is it that the city can do to change their attitude and their behavior as it relates to any of these issues? And especially if it relates to retail. I mean, as you look at Bricktown now, you probably can't find no more than 15 retail outlets that are situated there that is different than the restaurants and the clubs. So, I mean-- So, I mean, with all of this, I mean, and I, I, I think this is very studious and, and interesting to point out the, the different factors that exist there, but how much does the city have as far as any impact on change in anything other than maybe the parking is in reference to street parking? I mean, the city doesn't own a whole lot of property there, right?
We do own some key parking lots that we're leasing, but you're right, it is primarily owned by the private sector. So I think there are a couple of things that we learned through these conversations. In terms, I think you in particular are very interested in attracting retail. What we've heard is that retail is really secondary. You need to get more rooftops and, and office workers during the day, and it's really about building that density, and then retail will naturally follow. In terms of those other things, I think we need to continue to work with the property owners. As I mentioned, we have a somewhat novice development community, so there's a little bit of education that needs to continue to happen. Clearly, the historic tax credit program has been very important, and we know there's been efforts to try to get that continued. That's very vital for Bricktown. And then also, continued use of the TIF dollars in terms of working with property owners to help, and that has been used somewhat in the past to help with the revitalization of old buildings. So those are the things we have in our tool belt right now, but the question I think that we're still working with is, how do we get the property owners beyond this speculative risk? One of the things that, that became clear to me is that we have a first generation of ownership that is starting to reach the age where either they, I think, have completed what they're going to do, and they, the buildings are basically where they're going to be. So we're starting to see a second generation, and it's, it's some of those new owners that have me very excited. I've recently joined the Bricktown Association Board, and we hope to continue to build that relationship and try to work more with property owners about what they want to do with their properties. I don't think hardly anybody buys into Bricktown just to sit on an empty building. I think they really do have dreams. The question is making sure that they know the appropriate resources and have the appropriate ideas about how to get those buildings done.
All right. Thanks very much, Deb. AJ, I'm sorry.